...of our employees here at the county, lost her son last night in an accident down in Middle Swamp. Daphne in the water department, I'd like all of y'all to keep her and her family in your hearts and in your prayers today. And for the period of time she's gonna be dealing with, we don't have any information on it yet, but if everybody would keep you in their hearts. The prayers, I know she's hurting by the bed this morning. All right, Henry, would you open us up for prayer?
Sure.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we thank you for blessing us to be able to come out this morning. We thank you Father for this day that you've provided. And Lord, we ask that you be with us throughout this meeting, that we'll conduct it in a manner that's acceptable in thy sight and be a blessing to the citizens of this county. We thank you for the privilege to serve. We ask your blessings now, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Henry, will you lead us?
My prayer is to deliver the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order now. We welcome everybody here to the commissioner meeting for May. Our agenda, we have an agenda here, we've got a couple of things we need to change around. We're gonna move the proclamation for the asthma awareness month up to in front of number A and department reports after the citizens' comments. And that's all the changes we've got right now. So if there's nothing else from the commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Oh, we, I'm sorry, we do have to add a firefighter thing after the new business. I didn't catch that one. That'll be, we've got a request from the Gatesville Fire Department, saying you were about changing and moving, appointing a new trustee to one of their commissions they need to deal with firefighter relief fund.
Amended as well.
Yeah, we'll amend it again. Have a motion to re-amend the agenda.
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, first, the next on our agenda, we're gonna approve the minutes. You've gotta copy the minutes there. I hope you had a chance to look over them. Are there any corrections that need to be made? These are the minutes for the April 4th meeting. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next on the agenda will be the citizens' comments. We've got two. First one will be Mr. Thomas Hill. Welcome, Thomas.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, county manager, county commissioners, I come before you today based off of an event that happened on Monday, April 30th. I so witnessed that the county workers mowing their grass has destroyed a political sign. I so witnessed this on that day.
Can I ask you one question, was it county or was it state, a state road crew?
Well, I'm gonna get into that. When I called up Patricia Mansfield, roadside environmental engineer, she said, under any circumstances, that the political signs were not to be destroyed. Following the guidelines, she sent me an email, and I read that email now. "With the election season upon us, it is important for the candidates to be aware that the state law was changed last year governing the placement of campaign signs on state highway right-of-way." She further types in her email, "Under the change enacted by the General Assembly in 2011, it is now legal to place political signs in the right-of-way under specifically described conditions during the period beginning 30 days before the opening date of one-stop early voting and the ending on the 10th day after the primary or election day." She later goes on to say that the penalties of unlawful removal of signs, it is a class-three misdemeanor for a person to steal, deface, vandalize, or unlawfully remove a political sign that is lawfully placed under this section. I'm coming before you gentlemen today noticing also that Mr. Twine, you also, sir, have a sign that has been destroyed. With this, it is illegal for the state or the county. It was unclear exactly who they are, is under investigation now, is led to believe that the county is responsible. However, this is private contracted out to various contractors and subcontractors. I'm coming before you today to clasp hands that the Democrats and the Republicans during this primary and general election have a bipartisan effort that our signs will not be destroyed. And I further ask that we stand together on this. Also, I want to make reference upon this that the primary is upon us. And I wanna make very clear, along with my Republican colleague from Hobbsville, he, as well as myself, stand firm with the marriage amendment being between a man and a woman. These things we bring forth to you gentlemen today, this is where we stand, and I hope that we can clasp hands upon the signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. I would like to make a statement on that really quick about the mowing. The mowing is done by the state, not the county, and that needs to be, they take care of all roadside mowing. The county has no control, does not contract anybody to do that, it is the state.
I understand that, with the yardage by the street, it is in fact done by private contractors. However, the county does mow the grass around specific areas. That, sir, I've spoke with the gentleman, with the waterworks dealing with their mowing as well. He is aware of it as well. Thank you.
Where was your sign that was allegedly destroyed at?
Well, this specifically was a Bill Cook sign. It was right there. I'm sorry?
Where was it?
It was approximately five and a half to six feet away from the street. By law, it says that it's allowed to be within-
I understand what the law is, where was it?
Yes, sir, I'm about to tell you. It was over three feet, approximately five and a half to six feet from the roadway at 386 Daniels, where I currently reside. Also, there was another Bill Cook sign that was also destroyed off of Folly Road.
Okay, 386 Daniels, there would be absolutely no reason for the county to mow that grass.
I understand that. Yes, sir, it was the state.
So you need to be at the state.
Yes, sir, but I also spoke with the county.
In your earlier statement, you alleged that the investigation leads you to believe it's a county entity. It would not be a county entity.
The county does in fact mow their grass.
Not at 386 Daniels we wouldn't, why wouldn't?
No, sir, no, sir. You're mixing two different issues up. If I may be clear about this-
Please, that'd be great.
The county does mow grass, and after talking with them, it was led that the state privately contracts it out. They, in fact, destroyed the signs. I'm letting you know how the investigation went. It is ongoing. They themselves yesterday, being part of the management team, came out and rode by. Again, there's just two Bill Cook signs, one on Folly Road, one on Daniels. There have been other signs damaged, such as Mr. Twine's, done with the mowing. I would just ask that we handle this with a bipartisan effort. Thank you.
We agree with you on that, we do agree with you.
Yes, sir, thank you for clapping hands.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sidney Pierce? Hello, Sidney, how are you?
Doing good. Good morning, commissioners, I'm just here today to speak about a very important issue, issue dealing with the May primary. As you may know, there's an important issue up there, it's dealing with the marriage amendment. And I'm just here to publicly state that I am supporting and endorsing the amendment. As a Christian, as a strong Christian, I believe in protecting and defending the sanctity of marriage, and I believe it is very important for the state. The second reason that I am supporting it has to do with the fact that what's going on in other states that have actually legalized gay marriage. In those states, as soon as they've legalized it, religious institutions and other religious organizations have immediately become inundated with lawsuits. In Massachusetts, for example, there was a Catholic adoption organization that lawsuit was brought against, and that lawsuit caused that entire adoption organization to shut down, to shut its doors. And that's awful, because the only purpose in Massachusetts was to help orphans, and they were shut down because of a lawsuit. And this amendment, the marriage amendment, would help prevent all this, because it would prevent gay marriage from ever being legalized in this state. And I'm also calling upon all the candidates for running for county commissioner to publicly state their positions on this important issue. And not just those who are running this cycle, but for those who will be running in two years or so, I'd like to also know about your positions on this important issue as well. I look forward to hearing your positions on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sidney. All right, next on the list is Ms. Georgia Taylor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Tappel, county commissioners, thank you for your time. I work for the American Red Cross Blood Services Mid-Atlantic Region, and I'm here to ask your support for our upcoming blood drive on May the 16th at our community center here in Gates County. The Gates County Lions Club is sponsoring this lifesaving event, and I just wanted all of you to know, including the ladies and gentlemen in the audience, that our blood supply is critically low at this time, not only in our region, but nationwide. Every two seconds in this country, someone needs a blood transfusion, and in our region alone, we need to collect between 600 and 700 units of blood every single day. So if you all could support this effort with the county employees and go back to your communities and the areas that you represent and just talk it up, and just help us to have a really good turnout, we have a goal to collect 50 units of blood that day, which is, seems like a small portion of the 700 that I mentioned that we need to collect every day. But we schedule our blood drives to all add up to that number, so each and everyone is very, very important. So I have information, if you would like to have some of this, about blood donations, but it's safe and simple, and I just challenge everyone to be a hero and come out and give blood. May 16th, 12:30 to 6:30, Gates County Community Center. Thank you very much.
There was an email sent out this morning, or yesterday afternoon, to all county employees about it, so.
Please, don't forget.
All right, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, I mean, on the list is Mr. Cal Bryant from our local newspaper.
Good morning.
Good morning, Cal.
Two items this morning. One, on behalf of my family, I'd like to thank this board on behalf of the county citizens for your condolences over the loss of my sister. Even though I don't live or vote in this county, it's nice to know that you, that we have friends near and far, even though Gates County's not far. Secondly, our new magazine is out, I passed copies out, I have a box full up here for anybody who wants a copy. They're free, of course, it's our quarterly Front Porch Living Magazine, which has feature stories from the four counties that our office covers, which includes Gates, Bertie, Herbert, and Northampton, and you're welcome to them, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cal. Y'all remember, he's got boxes of these magazines, y'all pick up one before you leave. All right, that takes care of our first citizen's comment. Next on the agenda, we're gonna go to department reports, but first we're gonna do, we've got a proclamation for asthma awareness. Let me get my hands on it. This is gonna be the proclamation supporting asthma awareness month. It's gonna be dated in May 2012. How you doing this morning? Pull it, there you go.
Good.
How you doing? This is Mr. Christian Boone, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, Mr. Christian Boone? You might have had some young man this morning.
Thank you.
Would you like to address the board?
My name is Christian Boone, I am eight years old, I am in the third grade at Buckland Elementary School, and I have asthma. I was born into a family with upper respiratory problems and all kinds of allergies. Asthma bothers me the most when it is cold and windy, or if I get too hot and stuffy. I've only had to go to the hospital once for an attack, that was pretty scary. We have learned and still learning how to control asthma. Now, me and my mom and my dad and my doctor seem to keep it under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Will you stand right there a moment, if you will, I'm gonna read this proclamation and then present it to you. This is a proclamation supporting asthma awareness month, May 2012. Whereas it is epidemic of asthma in the United States affecting 33 million children and adults, whereas asthma is the leading cause of childhood long-term illness, hospitalization, and school absenteeism, and whereas asthma affects 183 public schoolchildren in the Gates County schools, and whereas asthma is treatable and controllable disease, and whereas there are several steps people can take to monitor and prevent asthma attacks and effective treatments to control asthma. Now therefore, I Graham Eltwine, Commissioner, Chair of the County of Gates, do hereby proclaim, May 2012 is asthma awareness month for the County of Gates. This will be adopted the second day of May 2012. Gentlemen, do I have a motion that we adopt this proclamation supporting asthma awareness month?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. He wants to get back to school, I know he loves school so good. I wanna make sure he gets there early. Y'all have a good day. Thank you for coming. All right, next on our agenda, department reports, Ms. Sandy Pittman, our finance officer. Morning, Sandy.
Morning, how are you all?
Good.
There was, there were three budget amendments in your packet, and then there should have been one at your place this morning. Do we all have those?
Mm-hmm.
Amendment number 56 is just a reallocation of funds within the tax department. This is to allow for some additional costs for advertising and for an upfront programming cost for outsourcing the tax bills, which is a one-time cost. Number 57 is to budget for the hazardous materials emergency planning grant that was received by Billy Winn. Number 58 is to budget for the Homeland Security Grant also received by Billy Winn. Number 59, the one that was left on your places this morning, Reba has received some additional funds through her SOS grant, and this is to budget those funds that she's received, or will be receiving. Are there any questions?
Sandy?
Sir?
I don't see Billy out there, I'd like to, somebody explain these two for me.
The one grant, the hazardous materials grant, I believe was brought before you in, was it March we talked about? The other grant, I have copies of them here, I can-
Do you know what it covers? That's sort of what I was looking for here.
The hazardous materials emergency planning, I assume, is to deal with hazardous materials during the event of any type of emergency. I would assume so. I'd have to go back and talk to Billy, really, to get some more information. When I looked over it.
He explained them, but it's been two months now, I think, so.
Yeah, it was, it was a couple of months ago, and the amendments were not done at the same time. These were presented to you then. I've got copies of these, I can get you copies if you'd like to see them, the paperwork that I have. I can see if I can find Billy when I'm done and get him to come back maybe in a little while. I know he was here earlier, I'm not sure if he's still around. I'll see if I can find him, though.
Reba, what's the SOS grant? Okay, that's what I thought it was, I wanna make sure. So you got more money than you were expecting, is that, or just, this is a payment on that grant?
It's more money. We were in the grant cycle, and they saw that I probably couldn't use anymore, so they called me up and asked me to-
All right, gentlemen, any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve these budget amendments as presented.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thanks, Sandy.
You're welcome. The second thing I have, Commissioner Horr had requested some information regarding refinancing the USDA notes. I've provided some amortizations in with your packets. The information is here. You know, we can discuss some of it now, but I really think the budget workshop next week would be a better time to look at these figures and discuss any options there.
Yeah, I think you're right, Don.
It's there, though, for your information.
I got a couple of questions, Cindy.
Okay.
Is this 2.39% rate still available?
I don't know. When we discussed this last week, I told you, or last month, I told you I would use the rates that we were quoted from BB&amp;T until we decided to do this. I've not sent it out for quotes and the actual rates.
I'm gonna talk about this a minute or two later, John. There's one for you. These, I went and, that's something very, very, obviously- Which I called, I called, I called a banker and talked to a banker and- There's two of them, one's got three on it and one's got two. Three, there you go. But let's talk about the one with the two, I actually put your rates in there. So what's happening on the top line is the 2.39% at 10 years. The amortization that on, in September, and the date might be right, but either September the 1st or September the 20th, our outstanding principal balance will be $1,747,615. At that 2.39% rate financed at two years, changes the interest to the total gray of $237,855. That will represent, we will have an outstanding interest balance on September 1st of $1,099,000. By taking this loan at 10 years at 2.39%, will save the taxpayers $861,000. If you take that savings and amortize that, that's $86,000 a year. Now, what does that mean? Obviously, cash flow's gonna go out by $86,000. $209,000 that you'll see in the top left, that's the increase in the payment above what it currently is. However, what's happening is almost per naught, that what you're transferring is cash and buying your asset. So you actually are saving $861,000 over the course of this loan by doing that. On the second one is the 3.39% at 15, which saves $592,000. Now that's using these numbers that we had on the prior loans. And I called a banker and just talked to him, and he couldn't give me, and I called someone, I talked to Dan. And I note, this is a question, does this have to go out to the LGC for refi bids?
Yes.
It does, okay. All right, anyhow, as we know, Southern Bank here in Gatesville does pay taxes to the county. And 3% is a variable dual rate doable for them. Doing the same thing at 3% rate, that's $798,000 worth of savings. So, you know, this is almost a no-brainer. So then when I did, looking at our balance sheet for the year, March of last year, we were positive cash flow of $685,000. If you look at our balance sheet today, March 31st, 2012, we're positive cash flow by $869,000. That's $234,000 more. Last year, our fund balance grew by $559,000. So it's very within the range of being able to pay this debt down, and it's critical. If you look at the LGC format, we in Gates County, now owe $7,902,000. That's what this 1.5 we just took on the table that's sitting on the balance sheet. That's $771 for every person in the county. The last candidate for one, Mr. Puris, made reference to our debt. Well, it's imperative that we pay our debt down. And what's happening, this is happening across the country, most, there's very little cash being out there. Most people that are doing that, that's what they're doing, these corporations are paying their debt down, they're making money. Why are corporations making money? Because they, they got lean and mean, they put people on the street. They had to, because of the tax situation that was coming to them, so to increase their profits, that's what they've done. And they are, and those profits that they're having, they were good profits out there. The reason is because they're not employing as many people as they did. They are leaning in, and they are paying their debt down. We as a county need to do the same thing. So, Sandy, what I would like to know is what is the true rates that we can borrow this money at 10 years?
I have to put it out for me to get you the rates.
You're gonna have to RFP to do that.
Well, we need to do that.
Well, we'll discuss, we need to discuss this during our planning on our workshop, because this is gonna affect the budget for years to come, however we do it.
It doesn't affect that.
Well, everything, everything that's spent in the county does affect the budget, we need to discuss it during the workshop.
We can do that, we need to be proactive every day. It's costing us $300. Every day that we are not doing anything, it's costing 300 bucks.
Well, you wanna make that a motion that we do RFP to get a, I mean, that's where we're at, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we get an RFP to finalize some quotes for a 10-year loan.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor.
For 1.1 million, I see you had 1,750 on there, which, which if we do it now, and we're very proactive, we probably can save another $20,000. I didn't make that calculation, if, because that was affected on, what is it, September the 20th? That's when the notes do. If we do it now, it's probably another $20,000 sitting on the table.
Okay, you made that as a motion that we send out a RFP.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Horr to also get 15 years as well, to see what that would, what that rate would be.
Okay, you're making that list.
I'd like to ask Mr. Horr, if he will, to make his, in agreement with Henry, to make his motion specific on the dollar amount, too, if he would please, to be in the RFP.
The principal, the principal balance on September the 1st will be $1,747,615. Now, that is not the principal balance right this very minute, that's what I'm saying. Because of the timing mechanism, there's probably $20,000 that we can knock off, and I'm guessing, I'm doing the $300 in my mind on a per-day basis. So I don't know exactly what that is, but it's no more than $1,747.
Okay, we've got a partial motion on the floor. Do you wanna amend your motion to what you want now?
All right, well, we won't leave there, but anyhow, that's fine. I'd like to finalize the rate for a 10-year note and a 15-year note for $1,750,000 for the sole purposes of paying off our DSS building outstanding loan, which will save the taxpayers anywhere from probably, well, 15, $745,000 to $861,000.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to have the county manager and the county finance director do RFP for this $1.75 million to pay off the DSS loan, is that right?
That is correct.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay. County manager, y'all put out for RFP. All right, next on the agenda.
Ladies and gentlemen.
You got enough?
Thank you, Sandy.
You finished, right, okay. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, Renee.
Good morning.
Morning Renee, how are you today?
I'm having better days.
I, I understand. Could you talk with Daphne, please?
Um, we've heard from her this morning. She's doing some better this morning than last night. Last night was a pretty bad night. Y'all have your tax collector's report and no real major changes with that. The one thing I will call your attention to is our overall collection rate. Right now is at ninety-two point three two. You will see last year at this time, we were at ninety-two point nine. So, that kind of tells us we need to get in gear a little bit and push a little harder. So, hopefully, I don't know at this point if we'll get letters out by the end of this week, but we will be getting out another mass mailing and doing another push to get more tax funds in. So hopefully, we'll be more back in line with where we were last year with that. Do y'all have any questions with that? If not, um,
The only question I wanted to ask to be, the, the new attorneys that we've got, has he started yet?
Not as of yet. The contract, we've just gotten the contract back with signatures every day, so we've got to finalize that. We are working on a list to have ready. What we'll do is send out initial letters, given the taxpayer X number of days, to get those funds into us or set up something with us before we actually turn it over to him. Because in this situation, when those accounts go to him, that's it.
Okay.
So, we will be doing that. Also, Mr. Chapel passed to you this morning. This is just a summary of a foreclosure sale that we have coming up, May the eighth at eleven o'clock. It's a lot located in the Eggleston Farm subdivision. And you will see the breakdown at the bottom as to the taxes that are due and the attorney fees and calls. And that seven thousand, five thirty-six, sixty-six will be our opening bid on the property. And we have had some interest shown in it, so hopefully, we'll have some people.
Where is this, this subdivision at?
On Willington Road in the, um, near the Parkers Road in that subdivision.
Is there a house there or a mosque?
Not now. There had been a double wide on the property and I think it was back maybe in two thousand and seven that the double wide was repossessed. There is a septic system on the lot, however, since, you know, there had been, but it is a vacant lot. And I did not bring the paperwork with me this morning, but we had sent out emails in reference to the two pieces of property we had sold. I hope everyone received those. And we came out in the black a little bit on those, so that's always a good thing.
Good.
So, do y'all have any questions?
I see there are three under the owners. I see three owners here, are they, that's not husband and wife?
No, I believe this may have been children.
Okay.
Maybe. Any other questions?
I will just say that, uh, it was good to know that we get to keep the, uh, funds from that sale. Normally, when we sell property that's foreclosed on, I think after we take out expenses and attorney fees and whatever, everything else goes over to the, to the owner, previous owner.
If it, if it's sold at the courthouse steps, that is the case. What made this situation, these two situations different, is that we were actually the buyer at the courthouse steps. So, we own those properties outright.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda, Ms. Colleen Turner, our soon to be former DSS director. And she's gonna introduce our new DSS director.
I am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Colleen.
Thank you for having us this morning. If you might indulge me before I do introduce Mr. Merritt, I wanted to give the commissioners and the community an update on the Gates County Housing Committee. Uh, we received, this is hot off the presses, the housing committee hasn't even been made aware of this yet. But we received our notice on Monday that with no amendments, no corrections, our application for nonprofit status was approved.
Good.
So, the Gates County Housing Committee is now a public charity, nonprofit. That was an exciting step toward the future. And our housing coordinator, Chris Couch, is finishing up his first quarter of home reviews and has obtained the, the magnetic signs for his doors and his badge. And so, hopefully, people will see that and know who he is and why he's there and not be suspicious or questioning his intent on his visits. So, that being said, I would like to introduce to you this morning, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt, our new addition to the DSS family. Uh, Mr. Merritt joined us on April the nineteenth and has been spending a lot of time with staff and others in the county. And of course, with me doing some orientation on budget matters and things of that nature. And I think that you will be pleased with his integration into county business. Mr. Merritt?
Welcome, Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr. Twine, Ms. Turner, thank you. I'd just like to keep it short and sweet, but, um, I look forward to working with you in any matters that come up and continue to move in our department and not only our department, but our county forward. Uh, my wife and I are looking forward to relocating to the area very soon and, um, being part of the community. If there's any other questions you have with me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Well, I'm sure there'll be some before it's over with.
I'm sure there will be.
We're a very questionable bunch.
I'd just like to say, welcome to our beautiful county.
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan.
It's a good place to live.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Jeffrey. You're, you're from Greenville, not that far away, so, uh, we're glad that you were able to make that transition.
We are as well. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, next on the agenda, Ms. Reba. Where you at? World traveler.
The first thing I would like to do is deal with our volunteer of the year award for our recipient for Gates County. And as you know, I'm the county coordinator and I put out requests every year to get, um, at least five people to be nominated to, um, be awarded for their nominee service as volunteers in the county. And I'd like to encourage everybody to take time to fill out those applications, because we have a lot of volunteers, but the applications are not getting filled out. So they have an opportunity to be recognized for their work. But this year, we have, um, one lady, and I'll call her up in a minute. She submitted her application and she was also selected as one of the medallion winners for the state, which is only twenty of the applications that come in across the state. They select twenty to be recognized as their medallion winners. And they are invited to Raleigh to meet with the governor and do pictures and a reception. So she does know about her award and she was recognized in Raleigh, uh, with the governor. And she also had the great opportunity of getting a picture with her granddaughter and the governor in that ceremony. So I'd like to bring forth Bonnie Alfred, as I read about her. Bonnie has been volunteering about thirty hours a week, eight months a year, for nineteen years as the head coach for the hurricane cheerleaders, who support the hurricane Little League football team. Under her guidance, hundreds of girls have been provided the opportunity for quality recreation and developing lifelong skills of teamwork, leadership, and commitment. The girls look to Bonnie as another mom that looks out for their well-being. In addition, she received a letter from Governor Perdue that reads, Dear Ms. Alfred, on behalf of the state of North Carolina, I congratulate you on receiving the governor's award for volunteer service in the individual category. Your commitment to service has helped make our community a better place and your spirit of giving will be remembered by those you serve. This honor was initiated in nineteen seventy-nine and I'm proud to welcome you to the prestigious group of award recipients. The tradition, the tradition of volunteerism is the heart of community service in our state. Recognizing the needs of others and working to improve those circumstances strengthens us all and your commitment sets an impressive standard for volunteer service. I hope that your success will inspire more volunteer enthusiasm in other areas of need. Bob joins me in commending you for your service and congratulating you for your achievement at, as an outstanding volunteer. Thank you for all you have given to those around you. I have a pin and a certificate that I'd like to present Bonnie with, and it's the governor's volunteer pin. And I want to read your, um, certificate. The governor's award for volunteer service. This is the certifier that Bonnie Alfred is hereby awarded the highest designation of appreciation for distinguished volunteer service to the people and the state of North Carolina and is, and is to be granted and extended all honors and courtesy provided by this office, entitled thereon to by this certificate of recognition and appreciation. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I do have one thing I would like to say. It's a tough job being a volunteer. And I have instilled and have awarded at this point sixteen scholarships. It's the only program in the county that provides these children with a scholarship, a youth organization with a scholarship. And I think it says something for the people of our county. We just need a little bit more cooperation with work in, in areas to have a place to have these children practice. Because it's very hard to get a facility for them to practice in. I've had between seven and eight hundred girls that have just been awesome and outstanding. And if me, myself, and our coaches had made a difference in one of them's life, we've done something.
And we're sure you have. There's no doubt in our mind that you have been great for Gates County. And we appreciate what you do for our children in Gates County.
Mr. Chairman, before Bonnie steps down, I just want to tell, add a little to her story. My son, Adam Owens, who works for WRL, covered the, the award ceremony up there when Bonnie was up there. And what Bonnie did tell you is that Gates County stole the show that day. Bonnie's grandchild stormed the stage and ran up there and, and the governor picked the, the child up. And, uh, so in the news there in Raleigh for that day, it was a, it was a big thing. And, uh, my son called me right away and, and told me how big a deal they made of it.
It was my great-granddaughter.
Great-granddaughter.
And when I stood up, she hollered, "Go Grammy!" She's a cheerleader. She's three years old. And the governor said, "Who is that?" I said, "That's my great-grandchild." She said, "Get her up here." So she come running up and she stuck her hand out. She said, "Hi, Madam Governor, I'm Haley." And the governor reached down and picked her right up.
We were, we were well represented and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like everybody to stand up and give her an ovation. It's people like that that makes Gates County a good, great place to live. Remember that, Jeff. Reba, before you go on, Bonnie, if you could see me at some point, we may be to help you with your facility. I think we, we may be to work something out. If you could, at some point later, come by my office and we could talk. I'm the county manager. She's a cheerleader, right? Go, go, go!
Okay, the second part of my presentation is that you all requested that I come back and share with you what I found out concerning my professional development trips to, um, parts of Asia and also included when I went to Argentina. So it's a two-part presentat, you can leave that up right now, I'm not writing for that. It's a two-part presentation, so I'm gonna put my watch out here like Mr. Jordan to let you know I'm really not paying any attention to the time. But I am gonna talk really fast and quick to get in most of the information. And I just, uh, completed this presentation with Cooperative Extension Administration on Monday. And I call it Colgate in the World Extension Implications, which might be some for county government also. But I had the opportunity to job shadow with the Vice President of Global Regulatory Affairs for Colgate, uh, named Levada Watson. And she's in charge of our regulatory for the world for Colgate. So if there's anything wrong with your Colgate product, she's responsible for it, ensuring that it has the highest quality of ingredients going into it. Uh, I got the opportunity to go to Buenos Aires, Argentina, Bangkok, Thailand, Shanghai, and Beijing, China. Uh, and as I went there, I had some objectives that I was looking to accomplish. One was to determine their techniques used to manage and provide leadership to off-site staff, which are located around the world to ensure successful completion of benchmarks, product development, and impact. For us out in the counties, we're seen as an off-site staff to administration, which is housed in Raleigh. Second is, uh, to interact with the VP and determine the process used to develop, educate, and market a quality product to diverse emerging markets while ensuring quality, customer service, and cost effectiveness. The third one was to determine if any business strategies identified in Objective One and Two could be applied to cooperative extension as it related to management, leadership, and development of new programs to new audiences. And the fourth one was also to explore the historical, cultural, and social aspects of those countries as it relates to how you do business in those countries. So, what is Colgate? It started out as a small soap and candle business, uh, in the nineteenth century. And now it has sales surpassing fifteen billion dollars with twenty, with two hundred plus, uh, countries and territories worldwide where they sell. It is the most global consumer products giant on the planet. And seventy-five percent of the sales come from outside of the United States. And they have thirty-eight thousand employees. And they manage, the, most of their products fall in oral care, personal care, home care, and pet nutrition. One of the quotes that I thought, um, was a good quote to share from Colgate was, "No matter where in the world you may want to work, Colgate can take you there." They operate on three core values. And if you go to their website, as you talk to their, their employees, as you see how they do business, they use these three core values in everything they do. It permeates through their key indicators, their benchmark reports, everything. And that's caring, global teamwork, and continuous improvement. And it has to be a part of everything that they do. And as it relates to their employees, they had a saying that said, "If you don't take care of your employees, someone else will." They also have a sustainability strategy and it comes in three parts. Respect the people, respect the planet, and company performance. So with that being said, as I looked at the, um, countries that I was able to visit, what was the implications for that? Well, in Argentina, they had continuous barriers due to the various Spanish dialects. They had, um, the culture's more laid back and it's relationship driven. So you just don't jump right in and start talking about business. Getting the work done is slower due to the laid-back culture and the hardship of filling some of their positions, because there are some places that people don't want to go to work. Just like in Gates County, sometimes we have a hard time getting a huge pool, because people who don't live here don't want to come here to work. But they do have hard workers. The other thing is they are really aware of how much salaries are in the United States as compared to what they make. And they're paid based on the location. So they're constantly asking for raises, because a job in Argentina would pay thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand for one of the positions I asked about. In China, it pays twelve thousand. And in the US, it pays seventy thousand. And so, the other thing we found out is, is much cheaper to get a product on the shelf there than it is here in the United States. there than it is here in the United States. In the United States, well, there, it only costs them eight thousand dollars to register a drug, and that means fill the paperwork out and say, "I want to sell this," nothing more, nothing less, where in the United States it costs one point four million just to fill the paperwork out. In Thailand, when you look at the findings there, relationships and respect are very important, and you must build those relationships over time, and business alliances take much longer to develop. Communication is very formal, and non-formal communication is rated higher than what you say. When we went to Shanghai, as you know, that's a communist government, and the work is completed faster there, because they have many more people to do the job. However, there tends to be no initiative, and this is due to the submissiveness that has been ingrained in the culture to only take step-by-step instructions. So there's a little lack of independent thinking, and so they find that when you assume a person will take the initiative to do something, it won't happen, because they're used to being told how to operate from the government. So the initiative has been killed on how that leadership has worked within the culture. And of course, government censorship and the desire to control, so if something they don't like, they will come in and shut you down real quick. While I was there, I said, "Okay, I'll pull up my Facebook page, send a message," and that's all I got was my face, because I forgot they censor all of that. You can't see any of that. And the blending of the old and new cultures is fast-growing. The location where I lived twenty years used to be a rice paddy from where I was then. The command of the English language is highly prized. If you speak English, you get the better jobs. There's lots of red tape to bring foreigners in to work, because they want their own to be hired, and it's difficult to import, because they want to ensure that they don't produce that product there. If they produce it, they want you to buy it from them instead of import. So what did that mean for us in cooperative extension? Oh, and the other thing in China, it is the new economic engine of the world. We hear about it on the news. When you go there, you will know they are guiding everything in terms of prices. So what the findings that I shared with cooperative extension, some were pertaining specifically to extension, but I pulled out some of the ones that are generic that might help with here as you run county government. That communication is very important. It must be timely, it must be constant, and it must be solution-driven. And keeping that word out there with your employees and everybody being on the same page with your culture, your values of how you're doing business gets the job done. How you position yourself, how you create a dynamic, diverse team composed of some local talent, and bringing some outside people in who have a different view will help you come to a great decision versus only having one group who've only seen it one way. You need to include that diversity to ensure you get a good solution. And so, cultural competency is a must in this day and time as we go about doing our work and how we work with staff. Maintaining that work and personal balance with your employees is important, so that they can be one hundred percent on the job when they're on the job and still enjoy their life. Your customer is highly important. They have to be highly valued. You must have continual input from that customer, and your evaluation and reporting to the stakeholders is important. So how you report back out your accomplishments is important. In extension, I shared that we report on a local better, on a local premise, a report of what we've accomplished. But we never report as a district-wide extension or as a statewide to say, "This is what extension's done in the state." Therefore, we have this fragmented concept of who we are a lot of times and what we're doing. And also, in our relationships, networking, 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 networking is a must, and due diligence to monitoring the political landscape and pertinent laws. They are constantly having to monitor the laws in each country and establish relationships with those powers that be. So in those countries, while I was there, I got to meet with the Director of the USDA, the head of the trade association, and we also got to meet with some other officials that they constantly have to maintain relationships with. And the better that relationship, the better the red tape gets cut down sometimes on what you're trying to do. The other thing was in branding, to stay focused on your strategies, you should have strategies, core values in place that should permeate through everything that you're doing. As you talk about what you want to do, as you do business, as you report back, it should be clear that it's addressing those core values and strategies, and your sustainability plan should be in place for your program. Colgate has a thirty-year-out sustainability plan for management, and professional development is a must in their organization, and they have professional development plans, and you as an employee, depending on what you want your career goals to be, that goes on that plan, and then your training is matched to that. And that's how they try to keep their sustainability up, because they want to be attractive to people to come to work there, and they want to maintain and keep their people locally, and they only have like a two percent turnover rate in employees. The other thing on operations is legal, regulatory, and marketing must work as one. And when you look at us as an organization, we deal with legal, we deal with regulatory, and we deal with marketing, and you all have to be working together for the same values, the same outcomes, because if one bottlenecked the decision-making process, then it makes you less competitive or less on the cutting edge. So everyone has to be, you cannot have one section bottlenecking the whole process of what you're trying to get done. And compliance is significantly more demanding, and non-compliance is significantly more risky. One of the quotes from one of the Colgate CEOs is, "A constant dedication to good governance shapes our Colgate culture and leads to good business results." If any of you all would like to see the full report, I'd be glad to share it with you. Given a twenty-minute time limit, so I talked real fast, and I was told you did want to see some pictures, so I will put those on after the twenty minutes.
Reba, while you're getting your stuff ready there, were you able to spend American dollars, or did you have to convert them?
I had to convert. I want to live in Thailand and have my salary here. It was thirty to one.
Thirty to one.
I'll give you an example. We were on a taxi, which is a tuk-tuk, which is a little open-air taxi. We went all over that whole day, six hours, man stayed with us, did whatever we needed him to do. When we got off, I said, we was like, "How much we owe?" Because he didn't speak English, so we doing the sign language stuff. And he said, "Thirty ba." And so I did my little calculation, that was six dollars. And I felt a little guilty, because six dollars for six hours, and in here, that'd have been...
So you gave him twelve dollars, right?
We gave him a good deal.
There are a few places in the world that you can actually do what you're talking about, live in one country and working another with currency manipulation.
They have a lot of different things to do. They have a plan of others that they can do. One of the climbs that would take up the entire road, so you can get a feel for that to get, so it was a size of like ten on the other side of this mall, all the way to the other side of the courthouse. And they give money at the end, which helps support the monks. And one of the monks gave us some words of wisdom. You're born to this world, you should learn four things. One is learn to forgive, learn to love, learn to give, learn to give, learn to forgive, and learn to forget. That's the big brother, they straighten, uh, moving some of the officials there, and that one there's fine. I also learned one other important thing is, babies come to be great, you can get a fake bag, you'll get a high-end fake bag that looks like the real thing. Food was delicious, and if you thought you were eating Asian food here, you sadly aren't safe. That's where our new coke bottle is, and you don't be sighted. Go in, finish your meal, fix the finish, relax the present, cook your food. That was Sam's Carlton, the rich Carlton here in China, and that was six years for me, and I could have built that lifestyle if I had. Bathrooms were interesting, that was a handicap, and that's the U. We call that the force of the pole, because I knew about that thing. That was in China, that was a full-on. The new technology is you can tell if you're actually in the mirror. When you turn it on, it's a mirror, when you turn it on, you got a TV looking at you. He went to Confucius' school that is now closed, but he actually taught students back to school, and Confucius was a philosopher. Those kids were yesterday. Those children actually sit on those targets. We also have a cheap coffee table, because it feels like coffee in here. They also know for their silk, so we got to see the silk making progress, and silk learns only like mulberry to get the quality silk. And as you can see, they're talking about the stains, because the silk learn, and you have a double for food and a single, and the single is what makes your fabric, and the double is what gets stretched out and wilted, and it was amazing how fine it was stretched out. Now with the double, that they're stretching, why I always started, and then it gets stretched to that, and you'll see one way they actually stretch it all the way out, from there, to make it wilt. You can get like ten silk ties for five dollars. This is some of the living areas, they're Chinese, people will build them on top of each other, very good mates, very good kitchen areas, et cetera. They do a lot of cooking every day, you know, a little nation, uh, areas that you're in, you're a little in the same. And this is outside, this is the business district, which used to be a rice field twenty years ago. And this mall right outside our hotel had nothing but designer stuff in there. I got a real good family award, acting like I'm the Ford and stuff. As I went in, I said, "Well, maybe I could afford a keychain," and I just snapped my handbag and it was two hundred and fifty dollars. So they actually wanted a couple of them, and a board, just somebody in need, and a lot of them are there in China. That was their tallest building. And that's where they made the big time off. And as I lived in these places, I started taking pictures of signs, of things that were pretty business over there. Seven of them, of course McDonald's was everywhere, we went in there to see how their standing was. Their menu, it's not the famous items, it's left, but McDonald's was just gone, you couldn't put their way everywhere. And we have four houses, we have three, we have a building called, we have a tiny building, we have a building. This was a young, this was a young, this was a young, so we had here, we had one. While it's showing the benefit, even though it might be dangerous, same, less fat, less clothing, pressure, look like they're on the spot for you, but ours is going to be soft and heavy, maybe fat and greasy. Starbucks was there, it was very green, and that, um, here at McDonald's, that's fresh. The other lady was there with, uh, over five... The other lady was, that was with, uh, over five hundred dollars, was also a very Christian, and she talked to the group. Uh, and they, they were really hard, they were Chinese, and they told them that it's a highly bad, but they were, they accepted with both hands. And you could have been a well-respected waitress, just don't show up in the park. We also got to go to the Great Wall in town, and that really, really lets you know how young you are in America. It's still awesome in town, this was produced by man back in the days of technology. And I'll share a fun experience with you. Uh, while we were up there, I, I know what it feels like, sort of paparazzi, yeah, because the golden people have been there that day. They are not familiar with seeing black people. So I was a star that day, they were taking pictures of me, getting the pictures, really, trying to feel my hair coming over, telling me. So next time I'm gonna charge a dollar, money is coming at me, I'm scared. We did get to run into Tokyo, we have a six hour layover, so we've been Rock Lake Airport, we're gonna run into Tokyo, eat something, run back. And we think if you couldn't get your eye, we'd do the subway, the, 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 down the east, and everybody would be ready to visit the city. We just, we think we're off the hook. And nobody's thinking, we try to park here, you think you're in New York. When you order a hamburger over there, you gotta get it with the, uh, that's the way they provide, which is half a minute, and then it's, it's seven e, like they say, one. And that's, uh, uh, some of the buildings in, uh, downtown area.
You are a dog, don't you?
I was trying to get a picture for the burn, the hole, and, uh, uh, that area is, uh, in Argentina. And the people live in those paraged, uh, mountain, it's similar to being living in northern shipping area. And of course soccer is huge. While I was there, one of the Argentinean cultural things is tango. So for those who know me, I love to dance, so I have fun.
Are we finished?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reba, we appreciate it. Alright, next on the gun, uh, Morgan.
Morgan, that's working now. Morgan, say what, Billy, will you come for a minute and, and answer a question for, um, for Kenny? Right quick, about your grants that you, that you, two grants that you received. Kenny wasn't here when we done them, and we're not, it's been so while, we didn't exactly understand them.
Okay, that's fine. I believe last time I was here, I was behind Reba, and she offered you lunch, and the day she gave you club music, I don't have anything to offer better than that, but, uh, there are two, and I, please excuse me.
You didn't go to McDonald's?
I did not. Uh, I was in a, a conference call, so I'm really unprepared for this. This is on the two grants, the hazardous.
It's, it's not the homeland, homeland security, I don't think they questioned about, it was the hazardous material.
Okay, the hazardous materials grant was, uh, issued by State of North Carolina. It is for decontamination training. Take the first responders, the fire departments, EMS, sheriff's department, and go through an exercise with training. Uh, our, our LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Commission, uh, receives Title II uh, reports every year. Really, the only ones that report to us, or that are required to report to us, are the telephone companies, because they have large quantities of sulfuric acid. So sulfuric acid is the chemical that we're gonna use in the exercise, because it is a, um, it's one that they have to, to relay to us. So it's, it's an exercise, it's a grant to fund an exercise to train for hazardous materials decontamination.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Billy while he's here?
Thank you, Billy, I appreciate it.
Alright, next, uh, Ms. Morgan Jethro, our planner.
Y'all hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, now for a truly different change of pace. Um, you have with you, you should have with you a copy of the Hollowell Preliminary Platte. Um, this was approved by the planning board, um, excuse me, conditionally approved by the planning board, um, April the twenty-fourth. And it is here for your blessing, so we can proceed on with the final platte procedure.
Is this the preliminary platte?
Yes, sir, this is the preliminary platte. You will see the final platte.
And we're looking at the three lots, um, lot three, lot two, and lot one, is that right? The other two already been, been occupied?
Those two are already been platted, yes, sir. And if you have any questions for me, feel free.
This is Daniel's room. Do each of these have a separate driveway?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, you have any questions for Ms. Morgan on this preliminary platte presented to us?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the platte as presented by the planning board.
Alright, we've got a motion to approve the platte, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
Wow, that was easy. Okay, one last thing, just to make you aware, um, I will be having some planning board vacancies coming up at the end of May. Um, Mr. Thomas Langson is rotating off, he is term limited. Um, Mr. Chuck Brothers' term will be up, and Mr. Dan Lang's term will be up. I have three applications that you should have copies of to fill those spots, and we can discuss that at the night meeting in May.
Alright, thank you, Morgan.
You're welcome, thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda, we have a, uh, letter from, uh, Mr. Dane Yure, Chief of the Gatesville Volunteer Fire Department. Um, it says, Dear Board of Commissioners, Currently, Mr. William P. Mitchell serves as the County Commissioner Appointed Trustee for the Firefights Relief Fund Board. Since Mr. Mitchell is now residing in an assisted living facility in Elizabeth City, we would like to make a recommendation that Mr. Wade Ward-Hobbs of two oh four Edmonton Street, Gatesville, be appointed to serve as a trustee in his place. Thank you for this consideration of, of this recommendation. Sincerely, Dane Yure, Chief of the Gatesville Volunteer Fire Department. Um, are there any questions on that? If, if not, we'll, uh, I don't know how, I reckon we'll just make appointment. And make a motion that we appoint Mr. Wade Ward-Hobbs as the trustee to replace Mr. Billy Mitchell.
Is that a motion by you?
No, I'm, I'm asking for a motion.
Some of them.
Alright, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Dane, would you notify Dane on that? And probably copy Wade. Alright, the next on our agenda, uh, Mr. Barry, Dr. Barry Williams, from the Board of Education, and, uh, that, what, what was that other show Barry Williams played on, the other guy?
Brady Bunch.
The Brady Bunch. How you doing, Barry?
I'm doing okay.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, Board Members, Mr. Chapel, and Ms. Hendricks. Uh, first of all, what I'd like to do is say thank you, um, for March twelfth, uh, for collaborating and discussing and going over, uh, the things that, that are important to not just the Gates County School District, but to all the citizens in Gates County. Um, if I start from the bottom of the pyramid up and start giving out thank yous, I can thank the school board. Uh, they're on the bottom of my pyramid. I, I thank the administrators, and the directors, and the teachers, and who's at the top of the pyramid are the students. So, uh, thank you very much for doing all that you can, and, and, uh, the collaboration, as I said, uh, on March the twelfth. That was a very exciting and eventful, uh, evening for us. Before I, I make a request of, of what, uh, we have come to, uh, a conclusion on as far as our budget, we have to, I feel like, and you probably know these things, we have to wind the clock back about, uh, sixty years. And I never, ever, ever point, uh, my fingers at anyone to blame, but today I will. Uncle Sam is dreadful at micromanaging what actually happens in schools and classrooms. What he is best at is driving priorities and setting agendas. He has influenced the overall direction of K through twelve education by combination of jawboning, regulating, mandating, forbidding, spotlighting, and subsidizing changes in the decades ba, dating back to the nineteen fifties. If we go back to the nineteen fifties, the first big event, the, is the Brown versus Board of Education. Struck down government mandated racial segregation, and Sputnik spurred a question of science and mathematics education. In the nineteen sixties, Lyndon B. Johnson, Elementary and Secondary Education Act expanded federal funding of schools, and launched Head Start and Job Corps. We had the Civil Rights Movement, which was their educational opportunity there for our students. The nineteen seventies, the Education for All Handicapped Children Act entitled every kid to fate, free, appropriate public education. In the nineteen eighties, the Nation at Risk with a Coleman Report, that did a survey on the third international mathematics and science study. Out of forty countries surveyed, the United States was thirty-seventh. The Nation at Risk Report shifted the nation's priority from equity to excellence, boosting standards, tests, and accountability. Nineteen nineties, the National Assessment of Educational Progress is the first set of standards. How good is good enough when it comes to student achievement? Two thousand, No Child Left Behind, NCLB. Every student should be proficient at math and reading, breaking down achievement levels by subgroup, and pushed every student to make adequate yearly progress or face consequences. Two thousand ten, Race to the Top. All we have to do is jump through hoops to win some money. All educational platforms brought unintended consequences, pushback, and sizable financial burdens. So here, as I stand for you today, in your packet, you should have a, a document that we created. And Mr. Blanchard, would you please? We're requesting that the county appropriate two million eight hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. This rec, this request represents a two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred dollar and thirty-nine cent increase from the appropriation we received in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year. Now, there were so many factors that came into play with the reason that we are requesting this amount of money. The discontinuance of the educational job fund. Reversion of the significant state funding, which was, uh, six hundred thousand dollars, six hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. An increase in state retirement rate and health benefit insurance. An increase in maintenance and repair costs. An increase in fuel prices. The implement, implementation of the Common Core and Essential Standards Curriculum, which will require additional training and staff development for our teachers. And an expected increase in expenses for our athletic program. And to date, we are looking at SACS accreditation that comes in February of twel, twenty-third through twenty-seventh of two thousand thirteen. I get a telephone call yesterday, our HVAC systems at Buckland Elementary are starting to, to fail. Um, that's an expense that we have to get covered, starting to warm up, and we need to provide a safe conducive, uh, environment for our kids to learn. And we have server problems, which we have contacted a company out of Raleigh to come in and fix our server. If we are going to test, uh, and assess our students online, we have to have, and we have to have dependability on our, uh, technology with our computer systems. On behalf of the Gates County School System, of course, we would like to thank you for consideration for this request. And if you have any questions, I've got my CFO flanking my right right here, um, that, uh, can answer, I'm sure, any question that you have.
Gentlemen, I know we're gonna be discussing this in our budget workshops, if you have anything now that Reba can answer?
Have you all used any fund balance to, uh, meet your budget this year?
For this year?
Yeah.
Um, not at this point, or whatever, we do have it budgeted, I, for closer toward the year end, which comes in the next month. So, so far to date, it is budgeted to be used by June the thirtieth, um, for some items that haven't come forward yet. But as of today, not all of that has been spent. It's budgeted, but not spent.
Reba, what's, um, what's going on with lottery proceeds? Anything new in that area as far as money being funneled down to education, any changes?
Now Sandy might be able to answer that, but.
I'll take a stab at it first. Uh, our lottery proceeds go to construction, that's what we use the county's lotteries for.
Reba, I'd like for you to do one thing.
Yes, sir.
On this, right here, the, what I'd like for you to do is put the past three years right beside beside this. Can you do that? Just as comparison with the percent change in the categories.
Anything else, gentlemen? Not, we will, okay, okay, we'll consider the budget as you present.
I do have one other question.
Okay.
Under your salaries and benefits, I s, I see transportation, maintenance, uh, student support services, clerical custodian salaries and benefit, what about teacher's salaries?
Teacher salaries?
Yeah.
We try to pay those from state funds.
Off state fund?
Right.
Okay.
We try to, um, push as much on state funds as possible salary wise, if we can, before, um, those issues.
And Dr. Williams, what happened at the, uh, didn't you go to Raleigh a couple of weeks ago? How was that? I saw that online, I, I believe there was a lot of, uh, superintendents making some comments and stuff that I happened to see.
Several superintendents throughout the state.
Yes.
Uh, went to that meeting, uh, to, uh, uh, explain to the State Board of Education that the, the reversion money is just detrimental to the school districts, it's detrimental to the communities, it's detrimental to the counties. And it was us being there to have our voice, uh, you just don't put, uh, a figure, uh, with a district. You put a figure with a face, not just a teacher's face, not just with a, uh, an aide's face, but with a student's face. And that right there hit home, so, uh, uh, you know, if you just take half of it, uh, I personally think you don't need to take any of it, uh, if you want my opinion, but, uh, yes, that was, uh, uh, very interesting, exciting, and, uh, I felt like it was a good thing our superintendents joined together to do that.
Oh, yes, like so.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I do want to, uh, Mr. Ora asked several, uh, questions, and wanted us to, uh, respond to those questions, and, uh, there's no way that, that we have the time to, uh, cover these. questions, and there's no way that we have the time to cover these, but we have every question and we have everything answered, and so I would like to give this to him.
If you'll give it to Diane, she'll make a copy for everybody, we'll have a copy for everybody.
Okay. So you have that information and...
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Okay. Thank you all, gentlemen.
Thank you guys very much.
We'll probably talk to you again.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay.
All right, next on the agenda, our county manager has a couple of items.
Actually, I'd like to do these in reverse order that are on the agenda. I'd like to start with the have a funds in this resolution. Have a funds are currently being used in the county to pay the maintenance on our voting and election machines. It's the understanding that the have a fund money starts at the federal level, comes to the state level, the state is required to put a percentage of state dollars with the federal dollars before they can be released to the counties. The state in the last budget did not appropriate their percentage, and therefore the money's being held up. This issue's going to cost us about thirteen thousand dollars in Gates County, and I think in the resolution it gives you the figure statewide of how much it would cost, three point two million, but to us specifically, it's going to cost about thirteen thousand dollars if this money's not put together. Washington County, which is where this resolution comes from, has already sent in their resolution. I would ask that the board consider passing this resolution to be sent to the state.
All right, gentlemen, you've got a copied resolution before you. I hope you've had a chance to read it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to motion that we endorse the resolution for release of help America Vote Act Title II funds in North Carolina.
All right, we've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right.
All right. That was the easier of the two. The next item I have is the presentation of the actual budget, which you should have in front of you, should be in your packet. I'll start, kind of like Dr. Williams was saying, this is not something that I did alone, department heads and I worked together. Sandy obviously was instrumental, and Marie, the finance department was instrumental in getting this document put together, getting the numbers right, getting it to a level where everyone could hopefully be able to function and move Gates County forward in the next budget year. So, obviously, there's going to be, I think, three different budget workshops scheduled, so we can go into greater detail at that point. I would just like to hit the highlights today if I could, and then we can move forward in the budget workshops in greater detail. From the budget message, I'll just hit the highlights. The, this budget proposal will do the following things. The county tax rate for the fourth consecutive year will remain at sixty-four cent per one hundred. The general fund budget will be ten million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand five fifty-seven compared to ten million five eighty-nine seven oh three last year. The total budget will be twelve million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-two compared to thirteen million last year. I propose that we give the county school system the funding level of last year of two million five hundred and ninety-two thousand zero hundred and seventy-nine dollars plus an additional one hundred thousand dollars in this year's appropriation. This increase represents the third consecutive year in which the school system has received an increase, with the previous increases ranging from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars per year compounded. I propose the county employees will be eligible for an up to two percent merit increase. This will be the fourth year of the county's written evaluation system and the third year in which a merit increase has been tied to same. There's been noticeable improvement in some of our previously average to below average employees, and I believe that's directly attributable to the evaluation system. This budget year will be the fourth consecutive year in which the county does not, in which I propose to not use unreserved fund balance as a mechanism to balance the budget. Finally, this is the second year of using our capital improvement plan, which I believe is an unqualified success. The room you're sitting in right now has new carpet due to your capital improvement plan, the wall's been fixed because of your capital improvement plan, the bids are going out for your roof, the community center roof, the HVAC and administrative building, there's been multiple county projects that have been done this year because of your capital improvement plan. It's going to give the county and continue to give the county the ability to address these problems that haven't been addressed for many years and do it in a rational and logical way. The last thing I'll say is property tax should move from nine hundred and twenty-one million six hundred and twenty thousand six oh five to nine hundred and twenty-six million six eight zero seven eight seven. That is, that is about three minutes on a three-month project, so, very brief questions, I'd be glad to entertain them. Like I said, in more detail, we can go into the, in the budget workshop.
All right, gentlemen.
Well, like I said a little while ago, I don't know what our cash burn rate is going to be over the next three months, but we have positive cash flow by two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars as of March thirty-one. And I think as we move along to our June thirtieth date, there's some of the things, especially with what the school board has put on the table, and I think that does require some more insight as to some of those numbers. But I certainly think that we as citizens in Gates County, that education is our top priority. We've had positive cash flow here for several years, and we've got to work as a team. That's the Board of Education and the county commissioners. So I'm going to be looking closely at that, and I think it's something that merits a lot of discussion. I think we need to be, I have something in the coming months that I want to present that's a presentation to the public at some of the fire stations and maybe some of the other places around that concern some of this same situation. I've spoken to some board members of education, and I think it's a proactive plan. I think it's something that can be bought in by the community, by a big majority of the community, and now's the time. There've been some developments over the last three weeks. They're not quantified yet, but I'm looking into them. And so I think education is our top priority, and I commend the school board and Dr. Williams. Asked a lot of tough questions and got some answers. So I think it's something that we really need to be paying attention to. And I look forward to our budget workshop, and also watching our financials over the last three months to see where we're going. I have another couple of things that I think that deserve some merit. They cost money, but as I said before, there's a way to save some money too, and quite a bit of money on the table here, in more than one way. Got some other ideas about that too. If this thing happens of what we were talking about earlier today, would be one point one million dollars in the last five months. This affects your pocket and my pocket. As a citizen, I don't like taxes, not at all, but there's certain things that I don't mind paying for, and that is one of them. Thank you.
Any other comments on the budget? If not, we'll move on. All right, next on the agenda, Commissioner Jordan, the resolution to support the North Carolina Marriage Protection Amendment. Henry, you going to discuss that?
Mr. Chairman, board members and citizens, I was approached and asked if the county commissioners would provide an endorsement for the, for a resolution in support of the North Carolina Marriage Protection Amendment. As many of you know, this has been a highly contested issue. It's on our, on our ballot this year as referendum item, and there are many that are for it, and there are many that are opposed to it. And there may be merit on both sides. However, I would say that, first of all, thirty states have endorsed an amendment to their constitution in support of marriage being between a man and a woman. Out of those thirty states, the language that's in our amendment item, which is of concern, two states have already adopted that language, South Carolina and I believe Idaho, and it's been in their constitution for a number of years. Having said that, I'm of the opinion that we need to do something, we need to move forward. As a board, I would recommend that we do endorse the resolution in support of a North Carolina Marriage Protection Amendment. However, I would ask that we would do as the Gaston County, County Commissioners did for Item Seven. If you look at Item Seven, under the whereas, it says, whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners encourages the people of Gates County and North Carolina to voice their opinion by exercising their right to vote to protect marriage on May eighth, twenty twelve. The Gaston County Board of Commissioners made a change to that to say that, and the Commissioners encouraged the people of, in our case, Gates County and North Carolina, to voice their opinion by exercising their right, their right to vote on May eighth, twenty twelve. We endorse this amendment and the next, now therefore be a resolve, but we have to be careful in telling someone how to vote. We as a board, we endorsing it, we putting the information out there, and we encourage you to vote on this very important issue.
So you're making, are you making this a motion that we...
I would make a motion that the Gates County Board of Commissioners endorse the resolution in support of the North Carolina Marriage Protection Amendment with one change, an Item Seven, that it would read as, as quoted, "The Gates County Board of Commissioners encourages the people of Gates County and North Carolina to voice their opinion by exercising their right to vote on May eighth, twenty twelve."
Okay. Are there any other comments before we go for a second on this motion?
I agree with what you're saying, and the only problem is right at the very top of it, kind of contradicts that. See, it kind of contradicts that.
It says in support. We're supporting, but you're not telling...
To protect, you're just going to take out protect.
Just to take out the actual...
You're just not telling them what to vote for, you're just asking them to be sure to vote.
That's fine.
Here's what Gaston County did. Gaston County had the same language, it says, whereas Gaston County Board of Commissioners encourages the people of Gates County and North Carolina to voice their opinion by exercising their right to vote.
Yeah, that's fine.
On, on May, May eighth, two thousand twelve. The original language said, "The Gaston County Board of Commissioners encourages the people of Gaston County and North Carolina to voice their opinion by exercising their right to vote."
To protect.
To protect. That was the original language.
And that's what I'm saying, that language is supported up here. When you said resolution in support of, it's the same thing as protecting, to me.
Right. But you're not, you're not telling, you're not telling each individual, but we're endorsing it as a board, and we're asking the citizens to, to vote on this issue.
Okay. Any other comment?
I'm in agreement with the change that Henry's calling for in the document.
Kenny?
I'm fine with Henry's change.
And I too, Al. In that case, we've got a motion on the floor to support the resolution of the NC Marriage Protection Amendment with one change, which we're in Section Seven, to remove the, the statement, protect marriage out of it, and just to vote on May eighth, two thousand twelve. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so. All right. Okay, that takes care of our business agenda for today. I've got a, we're going to, we've got the final citizens' comments. We have one name signed up, Mr. Anthony Felton.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First, like I said, did the, did the county form with very well. There was a certain subject about a library issue. The library issue's already been taken care of, and what was mentioned about, no, no one wanted a library. Well, I'm not one as no one, so I don't know why I personally say that. And the other thing was, I want you to mention about was, you know, I think the signs have already been brought up, but we're still having a problem, signs still going down, being defaced and all. That was a couple of times where I thought to myself, maybe if I go in my granddaddy's shed, get some steel shrapnel out there and put it there for her, I thought maybe that probably stopped it, but I probably, probably get in trouble for that. But it makes no sense this happens during election time, especially when you had to take lots of money out of your pocket to have the signs built and then replaced again. But I am for a new library, and that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony, appreciate it. Nice church you got there, too.
Thank you.
All right, the next on my agenda will be commissioners' comments. I'm going to start today, just, just simple things, but like, thank everybody for being here today, and I want to, to second and say again that remember Daphne and her family in your prayers today and then the rest of the week. She'll be going through a lot, she's a county employee that, that we thank a lot of here in Gates County. If everybody would, you know, would thank, keep her in your heart in prayers, if you get a chance to stop by and, and encourage her, we would appreciate it. Henry?
Okay. I too, kind of reiterate what you said about condolences, it is time of, we need to comfort one another, and certainly it's, it's a tragedy that's happened. First of all, I want to say that I'm very pleased that the Gates County Housing Committee has obtained their five oh one C three status. This committee has been very instrumental in helping the citizens of the county in their housing needs. At my last check of how many that have benefited, it is well over forty, and in conjunction with our Community Development Block grant, home replacement, it's, it's just been a great asset and benefit to the county citizens. And many who have been helped, they are very appreciative of what this committee has been doing. And this committee was started as a result of the Board of Commissioners responding to what was a need that was identified through the Social Services Department, and I'm very pleased to say that I see great things coming. We obtained a one hundred thousand dollar assessment grant, which is in place right now, is being carried out to do an assessment on the housing needs in Gates County. We have other grants that could possibly be available. We're looking at an eight hundred thousand dollar grant right now that we may have an opportunity to apply for and that would address housing needs in the county. So I'm very, very pleased at the work Ms. Turner has done to help, help us make that committee a success. This is part of, of helping the citizens in the county in a, in a social need that, that we have to be responsive to as, as citizens and commissioners. The other thing, we were asked to address our opinion or position, if you will, on the, on the marriage resolution, and I think that's been taken care of. And I believe, I know that we've, we've done the right thing. When, when you address these kind of issues, you have to do a lot of research and to be able to come to a conclusion, and I put in a few, a few hours or a little time in trying to get to where... And I put in a few, a few hours or a little time in trying to get to where we were on this resolution. So I'm very thankful to the board for supporting that. And we ask the citizens that they will take this information heart and make your decisions based on your convictions.
Johnny?
I echo the same statements that Henry just made right there. As far as marriage in itself is about creation in God's will. I'm also import, you know, in support of civil unions too, or cohabitants or whatever you want to call it because of the tax code, nothing else. I mean, that's the only thing, because people should have those kind of abilities. But when it comes to marriage, that's a very sacred thing, and as we've all said right here, and it's well defined. And it doesn't need to be, you had to exercise your own judgment, I guess. I appreciate you being here today. Over, like I said, over the coming months, I got something on my mind that I think will be proactive and innovative, and I think that a lot of people would get behind it. There's a way, and I think it's a need in Gates County. There's some things developing on the outside that I'm not a hundred percent sure. Like I said, if they're quantified, it will be a slammed up dunk almost. But anyhow, we need economic development in this county to support us. And unfortunately, we do have a lot of handicaps. Not only that, by just being a board of state in itself is a, is a handicap. There's some important races that are going on in the state in certain places and not in Gates County that will help us to achieve some of these things. So I'm sitting on the sidelines kind of waiting, and we need help out of Raleigh. That's where you have, you really need help out of those people. And there's some there that can help us. And I just hope that we'll be, as Gates County, as citizens, will be able to take advantage of some of those things if they come to pass. And I think it would make, there's some opportunity in Gates County for us if that happens. And I, I really do hope it happens, and it will take teamwork out of all of our citizens in order to get there. And it requires us to sell. And I'll be out there on a leadership role trying to sell you to public. And I think you, I think that, I think it'll be easy, but I've been wrong before. So, you know. I love Gates County. And I enjoy being up here and trying to bring solutions to problems and save you the taxpayer money. I also believe in education. Develop, you know, devoted a lot of my life and a lot of money towards that situation. And I appreciate what the school board's doing, and I understand the problems that they got, and I'm very sensitive to those. As I've said before, the thing that discourages me is that we have nothing for our top students in this county, absolutely nothing, that gives them the opportunity to stay here. Very few. And the ones that do, even then, they're leaving this county every day to go work. They just happen to be here on the bedroom side. And we got to change. We have got to change, simple as that. On another note, Colleen, I appreciate what you've done. I look forward to Mr. Merrick. And I think there's some good things on the horizon with that also. And it's going to take everybody though. Thank you for coming today.
Jack?
I hope that the county manager will make this preliminary budget document available to anybody that, that wants a copy of it.
It's, it's going to be electronic, it's going to be on the county website soon as we get done with this meeting.
Very good. Folks, this is a, is a very well put together document, and I would really want to encourage you to go read it. It'll tell you where your dollars went. It'll tell you the successes and the goals of the county. It's, it looks like Toby, it's about a twenty-five, thirty-page document. But it's, it's, it's not one of these documents that's hard to follow or anything. So I really want to encourage you to do that rather than us sit up here and tout what we accomplished. If you'll just go and look at this document online, it will show you what the, what this board accomplished last year and what our goals are going forward. Colleen, thank you so much for your service to this county. We are really going to miss you, and, you know, there's a, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes personally with your clients. And I'm well aware of that, and this board is too. We just want to applaud you for your service to Gates County.
Kenny, you get to be last this time, bud.
You know what happens when you're last? Everybody's already said. I certainly would like to thank everybody that came. I want to say thank you, Colleen, for all that you've done in the past several years that you've been here. I want to thank Ms. Bonnie Alfred for her volunteerism across the county and to the people that she's helped, the little ones out there, that they see what can be just by being a volunteer later on in life. Thank y'all for coming.
All right, so I've had a little bit, but Colleen, I forgot to mention, thank you for what you did for the county. Ms. Bonnie, you're great. Keep doing it as long as you can, and we'll help you what we can. Come let us know what we can do to help this app, keep it happening. I mean, that's what we, that's what we're here for. You let us know what we can do to help you. Well, I got a front yard at home, they can come down there and cheer all they want. It's quiet, and they do everything they want. I got a yard, field, whatever you want to do. We, we'll do something to practice that. But we'll make sure they get what they need to practice, because the children are important. The school board members here, you guys know, we all think a lot about education. That's what we're, Kobe's got a new child coming, and all of us have children growing up in the school system. We all come through the school system ourselves, and education is important to everybody. I hope y'all realize that. And we all know Reba loves McDonald's. She even looked at them around the world, so McDonald's is her favorite place. All right, other than that, we're going to go ahead and close out. We've, we've got a meeting this afternoon with the planning board. We're going to entertain a motion of recess.
So moved?
Is it going to be a recess? We're going to recess until two o'clock. Have a so, a move? Is that a motion, Jack?
Yes, so moved.
All right, a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.